Guys, welcome.
...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can you guys tell us why you got chosen to come and be here today?
Um, we're chosen because we are a part of the after-school program back in...
Great, well, thank you for coming tonight. Would you guys be willing to go down the line and shake our hand? And you can grab one of these pens if you would like. Can you guys come over in the middle and we'll take our picture together? Please, yes.
So fancy, you guys. Slide in a little more this way. I think we got you all. Okay, ready? Back here. One, two, three. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Let's go back this way.
All the way back down? With that, we'll move on to the approval of the agenda.
Ma'am President, I move that we approve the agenda with the following amendment: Additional certified and classified personnel action for consideration, ID 3.
Can I get a second, please? Fight it out. To me?
I'll take it, yeah, okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Great. We'll move on to delegations, Q and A, and public comment. Then we get to go to our building presentation, and we have Bernie Sitts.
Yes, my name is Gina Galpin. I'm the principal at Bernie Sitts. I'll let our teachers introduce themselves.
I'm Dave Delashon.
Uh, Mike Hill. I do robotics and some after-school program.
Um, Justin Godwin. I teach sixth grade LA, also Drama Club.
Cheryl and Sturman, and I work with Drama Club and ESL students.
A backup infant, sixth grade, so studies science, also student council advisor.
Chris Carr, sped.
Linguitano, read one eighty.
All right. Ever since we believe in empowering our students to have a voice, and so they have created this presentation for you, they decided what topics they wanted to share with you tonight, and so I will turn it over to them to get started.
My name is Ethan Castro, and the vision at Bernie Sitts is that all students will become lifelong learners for better tomorrow. Our mission is empowering excellence today and tomorrow. I'm a member of the student council at BSIC. Each homeroom at BSIC voted on a student that shows leadership, qualities represent their classroom on the student council. Student council gives input and ideas about decisions that are made at BSIC. We believe it is also important to give back to the community. We raise money to support people in our community, such as breast cancer and Haven House.
My name is Eliza Sanchez. Our values at BSIC are included in our pride program. Each letter in pride stands for a value we believe in is important for all students and staff to be successful now and in the future: preparation, respect, integrity, determination, and excellence. Each quarter, we have a behavior celebration to recognize students for showing these qualities. In December, the Garden City Community College basketball team came to congratulate students on making good choices and encourage us to always do our best. Students and staff had the opportunity to play basketball with the players.
My name is Liliana Vardinas. I am a member of student council. Last school year, a survey was sent to students about possible activities during stretch. The students voted to start a walking club. This year, we started, we started the walking club during stretch to encourage students to stay active and lead a healthy lifestyle. Students walk or run laps and scan their IDs to keep track of the miles they complete. Students earn charms for their lanyards each time they complete five miles so far. The fifth graders are in the lead with one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine, sev- one thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine miles. Our sixth graders have to, have a total of one thousand six hundred and thirty-five miles.
My name is Valera Medina. I'm a member of student council. The student council runs the school store Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. The student council makes announcements in the morning that the school store is open. The students can get passes to attend the school store and shop for pencils, erasers, stickers, scrunchies, and more.
My name is Alazia Martinez. The money we raise is used to purchase items for our school or donate to the community. We raise money for breast cancer in October, and students, student council matched the donations for a total of two hundred and fifty. We will use the money this semester to make good e-bucks for children at Haven House.
My name is Trevin Tabor. We have five competitive robotics teams at BSIC. In order to qualify, you need to have good grades and can't get any referrals. Students qualify, students who qualify can fill out an application explaining why they want to be a part of the competitive robotics teams.
My name is Aiden Griffin. At com- on competi- uh, at competitions, we compete against other schools. We earn points when our robots complete the requirements for the competition.
My name is Isaac Owens. It is important to work as a team because working together helps teams be successful. Teams that don't work together well will not earn points and will not be able to qualify for the state competition.
Our robots must be able to move and lift objects.
My name is Emily Elton. We have three teams at BSIC that qualified for the state robotics competition by earning points because we worked as a team, built the robots, and determined to help the robots move and lift objects.
My name is...
Do you want to do your... We'll have the robotics dinner demonstration. This is usually how they would be set up. That, that would, those would be farther away there. This is how they would use it, usually be set up.
We would have one minute, and then after thirty seconds, we would switch drivers with our homeroom. And there's corners that we have to get the cubes into, and there's also balls that we can put the balls into for extra points.
How long did it take you to build the robot?
Uh, I think it took us about, maybe a month.
So did you have some trial and error where you built something?
Well, it's not a lot.
And then each team built their own robot?
We have groups of four, and each team of two. We have shoulder partners, and we have, uh, teams of two. The teams of two build two robots for each group of four, and they get to decide on which, on which robot they want to take to accomplish.
And like now, they did a very good job in those skills because of the H, so I got to judge that.
For these two teams qualified for state, we have one other as well. All right, Maggie and Isol, do you want to move this way?
My name is Maggie Usman.
My name is Isol Joyce. Um, how you do in normal is there's a paper telling you what you have to do when you learn requirements, and you have to have no recalls. You can have three FYI, FYIs, and your grades can't be lower, lower than a...
Certain Drama Club practices are strict, and there's different sections that we're supposed to do. There's makeup crew, um, the sped, the actors, and you have to help them.
Um, opportunities that you have in Drama Club, um, is to make new friends and to, to learn more about acting and diet and makeup.
If I don't perform today, this school and parents is a sorely important. We're going to do a small skit from now.
Look, I know I'm not supposed to be talking to you before the case, but I just need to know that I'm not murdered. This is awesome, so I couldn't make it. I was traveling from Newark to New Haven, but I stuck in this town. Those are big mistakes. Turns out there's a murder on the same car as me, and now I'm the prime suspect. I'm so nervous. Can I have even my lawyer? You're not my lawyer, are you?
Oh, um, Tracy?
Casey.
Right, right, Casey. I'm Mr. Flubs. Sorry. I just get a little bit sometimes because I...
Sorry. Do you stand for you?
Well, um, sometimes I just, um, because I...
Look, all I care about is if we're on the way.
Yes, I have, I, I have full confidence in this case. You have a solid alibi. There's no way you're going to lose. Just as long as there's not...
Because Mr. Skamerton.
Oh, no, oh, no, no, no. This is horrible. This is...
Why? Who is he?
He's the best prosecution attorney in the whole state. He's never lost a case.
He's really that good?
The best.
Well, I mean, I am innocent, so it shouldn't be that hard to prove, right?
See, Mr. Skamerton doesn't really play by the rules. He's a little...
Thank you for everything you do for Bernie Sitts and the community center. Show your bulldog pride. Hashtag be bulldog.
All right, well, thank you so much for your presentation. Is the board going to get an invite to the play at the end of the, in May, you said, towards the end of the year? Hey, you have to memorize all your lines? Well, so far, so good. I'd say thank you all for coming, and thank you for what you do to provide all those after-school programs too. I know that's extra time for teachers as well. I hope you students have thanked your, uh, teachers that are willing to give their extra time to provide those, uh, after-school activities. They're really fun, and they're really important, so thank you. Thank you all for coming. Board, did you have any questions or comments?
Very good.
All right, thank you.
March fourteenth?
Yeah.
Have a good night. Okay, and we've got a correspondent.
Ma'am President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as previously amended.
Do I have a second? Thank you, Mark. Do we need any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Great. Okay, so we are now ready for curriculum reports. We will have our kindergarten readiness.
Uh, well, I am Monica Diaz, the language and literacy coordinator for the district, and I will be presenting on kindergarten readiness. And here in a little bit, Mary Crylin's going to present along with me. She has a couple of slides on kindergarten readiness. She's the, uh, link facilitator, our grant link, and she's also community engagement. Um, she wears lots of hats, and she helps with, um, a lot of kindergarten readiness and some early childhood grants that we were able to apply for as well. So a little bit of history about kindergarten readiness. Uh, back in the year twenty thirteen, um, the board approved readiness program, and that was a K-one readiness program. So, um, just focusing on kindergarten, we call that first grade readiness. So at the end of kindergarten, we like to make sure that, or we need to make sure that the kindergartners are ready for first grade. So at that time, we came up with an exit criteria for kindergarten, which included a mandatory retention, um, and that has, uh, helped reduce the number of kindergarten retentions that we've been doing in our district. Um, with this, uh, it's less subjective, more concrete documentation of performance of kindergarten students. Uh, there's a rubric that we use, and it lays out specifically end-of-the-year kindergarten, uh, expectations. So that continues. Um, we have Garfield Early Childhood Center. So by having a childhood cent- early childhood center, we have one building for all our early learners. Um, that allows us to have resources that are concentrated in one building. All the early childhood teachers are able to collaborate, and it also provides some parent engagement opportunities at that level. Um, we've got lots of early childhood grants that we've been working on, and I'll let Mary speak to a few of those. She's done a wonderful job, um, helping us apply for some of these early childhood grants. Um, you might have heard about the, um, Can't Wait to Read commercials. Maybe you saw them, heard them on the radio. Um, then they extended the program to, um, on to distribute a book to all of the pre-kindergartners, through first graders, um, in three districts in southwest Kansas just to have something to give the kids, get their hands on. It's a bilingual book, and I'm going to pass it around. It has some really neat features that would have got the kids really engaged along with the parents, and that's really what we need to do. Um, so be sure to look at the little, they're not bubbles, they're, I don't know, frilies. And then there's some cards in the back too, but that was a really good idea that the Kansas Health Foundation had, um, to get early, early learners going and reading before they came to us in kindergarten. We would like to see them a little more advanced in some ways. Um, so that was the Just, the Just Like You book. Um, I just, we just finished writing the Community Supporting Early Literacy Grant, which was also from the Kansas Health Foundation, and we, um, were actually asked to apply for it, which sounded really easy, but it wasn't. Um, it's taken, um, some thiamine, but I think we're getting it. They asked us to use, um, a model called the Collective Impact Model. So it's not just USD four-five-seven. It's us along with all the other, um, stakeholders in early childhood. Um, so we're working with, um, parents, teachers. We're working with all the other Russell programs. Um, we're working with KCSL and the Fannie County Library. So it's, um, what can we all do together to help these kids, these early childhood, um, kids? Um, the Western Kansas Community Foundation Grant. So I wrote that grant. I, I felt like, okay, so here's how it started. I wanted to do a program called A Thousand Books Before Kindergarten, where, um, parents are encouraged to, and whoever, uh, any caretakers are encouraged to expose their kids to a thousand books, thus exposing them to lots of background and lots of words before they get to kindergarten. So I went to several schools, and at one school, I was talking to this dad, and he was so excited, and I was so excited that he was so excited, and then he said, "Where do we get the books?" And, you know, that's something that, um, sometimes has helped me, I think, because I'd have to think backwards, where I should have been thinking, "Where are they going to have the books?" But it was backwards. So I decided to write a grant, and, um, with that grant, I purchased backpacks and lots of books. Each backpack will have ten books, and then I'll have like three, so like thirty backpacks at each site. Um, I'm going to start at Garfield, get things smoothed out. I, I plan to have that up and running when we do the Bookmobile this summer. We scan the barcode on the book, and we can scan a child's, just a number. It won't be a name or anything like that, but we'll have really concrete edits now, um, what kids are coming, from what location, uh, how many times they're visiting the Bookmobile, and, um, I think we'll have some good numbers. A little more high-tech than just tabling marks, which is what we've been doing and how we've been counting, but I think... Okay, then we also have the Finup Foundation Grant that, um, I think this will be the sixteenth year, and Leanne started with this, and it's, um, it's a great program. It, um, if you don't know what the Bookmobile is, we have different sites, and they go to different sites during the day, uh, morning. They're usually done by one-thirty before it gets really hot. But they'll have, um, also the lunch bus goes along with them, and they visit sites where, um, there's low SES, so these kids don't have access to books. And we had, um, twenty-five-hundred kids, um, actually going to the Bookmobile last year. So, um, this year, um, I've asked the children's librarian, um, a really enthusiastic go-getter girl, if she would come and do some programs along with Bob. So they'll just be a short ten or fifteen minutes, but that might be another attraction to get more kids there. So, um, then we also have, in, okay, the Link Grant, a KPP grant, and that stands for Kansas Preschool Pilot, and that was for the early childhood, um, four-year-olds at risk. So with that grant, we were able to have a pilot classroom this year. Link funds a classroom, a four-year classroom at Garfield, and then there was also a state pre-K, uh, classroom that was open, all using, um, grant money, so that's really good. Oh, my gosh, okay.
Mary, can I ask a quick question about the Southwest Kansas? Are you, you said, you mentioned the number thirty. Are you starting with like thirty kids to start it off, or is that...
We'll have about thirty backpacks at a site. So the kids can come in with their parents, before school, and they have, um, a specific pair there that will do this, and she'll check the backpacks in and out to the kids that, um, come and check them out. So I, I wanted a variety of developmental levels because maybe she's got young kids at home that are too young to start at Garfield yet, um, toddlers, so she could check out a backpack full of books for toddlers. She could check out a backpack full of books for three-year-olds.
So that's during this full year, then?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so Link has been, I think, just a fantastic opportunity for us, and I've tried really hard to do the best I can, um, being a good shopper, spending the money wisely, but just giving books to kids that need to be exposed to, to books. So I've reached out to places like Genesis and, um, Dr. Stecky. They, they don't belong to the American Pediatric Association, which does the reach-out-and-read, but she was just, um, really anxious for the opportunity to be able to give books to her kids that come for wellness visits. And then she also talks to the parents about developmental milestones and where they should be. And, um, I just, I, I was really fortunate that she was able to do that because I know they're really busy, but that's something that was really important to her. So, um, that's gone really well. There was, um, a thousand dollars in purposeful play money, um, and I think you guys have heard about purposeful play. The kids need to learn how to play, um, when they come to school, um, hopefully before they get to school. So we were able to give four prepaid classes, five-hundred-dollar grants, and kindergarten classes in the district got a thousand dollars because basically we'd taken all the toys out of kindergarten. So now we have put them all back where they should be, and I think that's going well. And I know the teachers appreciated that a lot. Um, I've worked with some private daycares that, um, providers that I met through our Bookmobile, um, literacy specialist that goes on the Bookmobile, and she knew about these daycares. They're bilingual, or some of them are just Spanish daycares, um, private. So I fixed up some bags of books that they could have to take home and go back and forth between home and the babysitter. WIC is a really valuable program that we have in Fannie County. I have provided, um, board books for their classes. They do, um, various classes on different subjects having to do with the health and nutrition of the infants that they, that they work with. Give them a lot of books to parents, as teachers. I got an email from Dan... I got an email from Danny today that said that her educators were just thrilled. They would like to have a book to give to their clients every time they make a home visit. But that would be like, we figured it out, like three thousand or something like that. So we did the best we can and we have, um, provided them with some books this, this spring as well. Last year we had, um, a visitor, his name was Tom Kirsten. And this was for a parent engagement activity. He came and spoke at Horace Good and it was all about, um, helping our kids be digitally responsible as far as managing their time on their devices. We had about a hundred and fifty, it was, it was a pretty good turnout. Um, his, I handed out a lot of copies of his books when I went to the Kansas, um, you know, the Live Well, Garden City, Fannie County meetings, I was able to distribute books that way. So I feel like we got the word out. And then, a couple of weeks ago, we had a visiting author. His name was Matthew Bolam. And he's trilingual, English, Spanish, and Japanese. You can imagine how excited the Spanish-speaking bilingual kids were to hear these stories. And he could, um, change between languages really, really well. He was enthusiastic, he was kinda goofy sometimes, he was a good storyteller. Um, lots of music involved. So all of the kindergarteners, um, head start kids and pre-K kids, as well as patrons from the library that go to WeReaders. They could come and participate at the sites and then we did a, an evening event for parents as well.
Okay. So you, we are keeping Mary very busy for, um, preparing kids for kindergarten, not only in our district with our, our, um, Early Childhood Center, but community-wide. So that's been, that's been wonderful for kindergarten readiness. Um, we also, in district, have early childhood video modules that we were able to develop. So we have all kinds of trainings for our preschool and kindergarten teachers as well as administrators. And these modules include trainings for Purposeful Play and ASQ, which ASQ is a state-required screening. So, um, as we get new teachers in, because these modules are recorded and accessible on demand, they can, uh, we can continue to train our, our teachers. I'm gonna show you just a little bit of how a teacher would go to on-demand training. They would go to Power Learning and watch, this is just a six-minute little video on Purposeful Play. And we have worked with Southwestern Plains Regional Service Center. Here are some of these modules.
Why, the why, and the how of guided or purposeful play. Much research supports the why or the value of purposeful play. In fact, the American Academy of Pediatrics states that active play, like moving the baby's arm, is fundamental to children's health. They insert play helps children learn how to solve problems, negotiate, develop creativity and self-regulation, as well as ensures a strong start to language and cognitive skills. Watch three-year-old Ellis and five-year-old Patty's unstructured free play of drive-through learning. What learning do you notice in their play? Did you notice Ellis's beginning understandings of money in exchange for goods? His problem solving as he worked to figure out how to cheer out the receipt from the receipt pad? If research documents the value of play, how could we as teachers use it as a pedagogical framework for learning in our classrooms?
I'll go ahead and stop it right there, but we've got on Power Learning, um, several, uh, modules similar to that, some of them longer. So, um, even administrators that might question why we're doing Purposeful Play in classrooms. We've got the research, we've got modules to help support the, the reason why Purposeful Play is important for early childhood and kindergarten workers.
Monica, are those available or shared with some of the other stakeholders in the pre-K that, that we've worked with? Do you open that up to share it or?
Um, we haven't because they're all on Power Learning and I don't believe they have access to that. But, um, that's, that's a great idea. We could definitely figure out a way to maybe share a link with them to offer some of those resources. Because they're very valuable resources. Some of our lead teachers have done district-wide professional development on Purposeful Play. And we have those recorded as well. So, um, we can definitely figure out a way to, to share those resources. Um, like I just said, we have a kindergarten readiness team. So this team will provide ongoing training and support for kindergarten readiness and the research behind kindergarten readiness so that we're continu- we continuously provide that PD for new teachers and refreshers for those that need it as well. So, beginning in two thousand eighteen, when we received the LINK Grant clear through two thousand twenty-one upcoming, um, we are allowing all kindergarten, or kindergarten teachers from every building, um, at least one from every building, the opportunity to go to a national conference called NAEYC, which is the National Association for the Education of Young Children. And this is a training that, um, as far as I know, we've never been able to send teachers to. And they're so excited about going to a national training focused on early childhood. So that's been exciting. Um, here's just a little bit of data. At our Garfield Early Childhood Center, we have five hundred and ninety-five students currently enrolled. Um, the year two thousand eighteen nineteen, we added four classrooms and two of those were bilingual. And just this year, we were able to add another one, um, through, through LINK as well. Um, ASQ three is a screener that, uh, the state requires us to give to all of our kindergarten students. So, um, one thing we noticed this year was that we had a drop in participation, which this, this screener is given by parents, not, not teachers. So that's a little bit different. We transitioned into some online surveys and we think maybe that was a little more complicated for some of our parents to do online. So we're making some adjustments and hoping for some better participation this year. Uh, but overall, the data coming back from the ASQ is pretty positive. Eighty-two percent reported no concerns, and this is parent responses to these surveys. Um, problem solving had twenty-four percent indicating some concern. Um, fine motor had nineteen percent, some concern, communication fifteen, and gross motor fourteen percent. So overall, we're pretty pleased that there isn't a huge flag of concerns.
I'm sorry, ASQ's agents and stages questioned there?
And then there's the ASQ SE two, which is the social-emotional part. And we're required to give both of those. So the SE, which is the social-emotional part, um, eighty-four percent of parents said there was no concerns in the areas of social-emotional development of their children. Um, teachers do use this data to have conversations with parents and assign their play groups based on needs. And teachers also collaborate with support staff to meet student needs. So if there's gross motor concerns, the PE teacher will know about it. If there's some fine motor concerns, they might share that with the art teacher so that they can, um, they can provide the support needed. And finally, I just wanted to share, um, we, we have new curriculum. So Garfield has Connect for Learning and kindergarten also, um, is participating in Benchmark Advance for their curriculum. Do you have any questions?
Garfield, that's a big number, is that a growing number or is that a pretty steady number?
Um, I think it's growing all the time and it could be much bigger if we had the room and teachers and, yeah, that's.
That was my sense, if you ever just sort of sit there and watch beginning of the day or when their classroom changes.
It's amazing.
That is a busy place around that building.
Transportation, I just can't even imagine how they get all of that done either.
It would be interesting to see if there's, if we had the data, it's just a simple trend in growth and use of, of Garfield and the programs.
I think the growth is happening because of the additional classrooms. So the more ability that we've had to add those classrooms, it's allowed them to increase their.
So the less we turn away?
Correct, because we have more, more spaces available by adding additional classrooms.
So if you feel that they will come, kind of?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And the data that you showed was parental concerns or parental identification of strengths and weaknesses. What about, um, your data with regard to, um, the rubrics you use to determine if kids are ready for first grade? Are you tracking that data or?
We can track some of that by retentions, um, but that's, that has gone down. I don't have that number, I could, I could look that up if you wanted to know the retention, um, data from year to year. What we did notice by transitioning into a rubric was that district-wide, there were some retention concerns because there was no solid data to, um, help teachers decide whether a retention was needed. So some teachers may just have a gut feeling. Well, that gut feeling may not really represent the data or the solid facts, whether a student should be retained or not. They just felt like maybe they could use another year. And now we've got some solid data that is aligned with our state standards that, yes, they can complete these things, they might be developmentally a little bit delayed, but academically, they're ready for first grade. So that has helped that, um, district-wide, everybody is on the same page with the expectations of what a retention would look like.
And how long have you been on the same page with the rubrics that the state developed?
Two thousand thirteen.
Okay, so we are seven, six years into it. We're starting to get some longitudinal data about perhaps objective analysis of the success of this kind of all-hands-on-deck, um, comprehensive, very involved efforts that you're putting towards first-grade readiness. And I'm just curious to see that the grants and the efforts and the time, the norms time that you're putting into these programs is translating into data that supports that we are on the right track.
And some of what we're talking about is very recent as far as all of the community involvement. That, that really came about last year with LINK. So, um, and unfortunately, LINK is a three-year grant. Um, three million dollars worth of resources for us to help support kindergarten readiness. But, yeah, I'm not sure, three years' worth of data, how we would, I don't know.
Also, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the advantages to that rubric initiative for first-grade readiness was to better engage the parents on what expectations were going to be there. So it was my sense anyway, that maybe one of the reasons for the drop in retention was that parental engagement, is, is that right?
Yes, um, all the teachers are expected to do a parent meeting at the beginning of the year to lay out what the rubric is, to go over the expectations of what kindergarten is. Because to many parents, it's a surprise how academically.
Rigorous?
Rigorous a kindergarten classroom is. So that allows the parent to be more involved. And knowing that there is a possibility of retention really pushes the parent to be more involved and supportive at home.
Follow-up. I'm curious with this initiative, if we've got data on second-grade readiness, if that's even the right term, if we went up in retentions on second grade?
Um, we could probably look that up as well because there is a first-grade rubric as well. So that is second-grade readiness. I didn't put it in this, but, um, there's a rubric as well. And then there's an optional rubric.
Now, although the retentions went down last year.
Okay, it was a curiosity question, but thank you.
Yeah, and if I have the exact numbers, would I have to look them up?
That's, that's sufficient.
So the retentions went down for both first grade and for second grade? I think I remember you giving us those numbers at one point. But I'm still trying to get a hold of all of your acronyms. My third year, so I don't always remember those terms. But I sure like to see those included in these types of presentations. It's admirable and a little bit overwhelming of how much effort and time and grants and grant writing that goes along with this. Just would be nice to feel comfortable that all of that effort is, you know, kind of producing the results that we would like.
Yeah, I just had a comment that I wanted to make. I know how time-intensive grants can be in collaborations and reaching out to other partners in the community. So I really appreciate all of the work that's gone into working with all of the other partners and stakeholders in the community. Um, such an important piece, everybody's kind of on that same page and working together and not reduplicating those efforts, you know, with other agencies. So I, I really appreciate, Mary, all the work that you've done with the, the LINK Grant and trying to get all of the other grants put in place to do those and, and everything that you're doing to get those kids ready and support their.
Fabulous.
Yeah.
Well said. Thank you.
Mark, you asked about the numbers at Garfield and they ended last year with about six hundred and fifteen and they're five ninety-five now. So there'll be more coming in, most of them were frozen from Russell, early end of the year, so we'll get them to go over that.
Well, one of the, one of the reasons we put so much resource into that, you know, to build the classrooms and they will come, is, unless I'm wrong, is this criticalness of launching those kids in their educational career in a way that is not disruptive to the kindergarten and first-grade classrooms. I mean, just figuring out where this large diversity of young people are in their abilities. And then trying to help them through, you know, helping them and the parents, expose them to words and books and trying to get them all into that place where the kindergarten teachers can work with them and range group. And so it makes sense, particularly with our demographics, that we would put so much resource, uh, resource. I'm just amazed and I, and encouraged by the energy and, and, and the caring of people in those programs.
All right, our next presentation are the CTE Pathways Update.
Thanks, good evening. CTE Pathway's update tonight. Um, when I last spoke to you, I think it was October, um, I talked to you about Perkins Five. We had just completed part one of four parts to the Perkins Five application. It's not even the application, the Perkins Five Local Needs Assessment, which comes before the application. Um, when I talked to you, I was really frustrated with the labor data that KSE had given us. I think you remember, we got a lot of questions about that. Um, and we worked really hard to find data that was accurate and correct for our region. And it took a lot of hard work and a lot of time. Um, one thing that had been frustrating at the time I was talking to you and I wanted to give you an update is, um, meatpacking and processing had been considered restaurant and event management. And Nicole, who I'm back here in the audience, advocated really hard for that to be changed. Um, and they did actually change that for us to an agricultural-related pathway. Um, so that was a really good, you know, win for us because we knew, the, the data was saying funnel our kids into restaurant and event management. And we knew that that was not the training our students needed to work in the industries that we have here. Um, also, another point of frustration that we had when I talked to you last was that our job, writing the Perkins Five Local Needs Assessment, was to look at the data for pathways in our area and then write to the state whether we should or should not have that pathway. whether we should or should not have that pathway. And no one on our committee felt comfortable advocating for any of our pathways to go away, even if we don't have local data that supports those pathways, specifically graphic design and fashion, apparel and interior design. Those two pathways are still very beneficial to our students. We know there are jobs in other places in the state, and we just could not write that we should not have them. So we decided together as a core team that we would write Perkins Five stating for every pathway that was in our region, we would, we would find a reason to advocate for it to stay. So today, I am happy to announce, oh, never mind, that we have completed all four sections of the Perkins Five application. We submitted it on time on February first. And the entire Perkins Five document was approved as written. So all of the pathways in our region will be funded. All of the ones that were existing will still be here. And I'm not talking just Garden City, U S D four five seven. It's everyone in our regional area that was assigned to us. That includes Siblet, Lake and Leota, Holcombe. There's about twelve districts and I didn't memorize them. So that is a huge win and blessing for all of the CTE programs in our region and area. So I'm very excited to let you know that it was approved. So right now, I am just waiting for the new, so that was for the local needs assessment. Our application will be based on our local needs assessment, but we don't have the application yet. So that's kind of waiting at the moment. So soon, teachers will be able to request things that they would like to purchase through this grant, and I'll be evaluating that. But I can't evaluate that until I know the rules of the grant. They don't have that yet. They've released a few rules, one at a time, but not an entire document of rules that we've been used to for the past twelve years under Perkins Four. We've had a list of rules. We knew if it fit or if it didn't fit. So currently in a period of waiting with the Perkins Five application, which will be a yearly application based on our local needs assessment, which will be reevaluated every two years and rewritten every four. So I would like to say that the core team that included Nicole Hahn and Chuck Pfeifer and Julie Farr put in so much effort. And so I did bring you copies. I mean, literally, if you want to read it, this is thirty-two pages of our Blood, Sweat and Tears. There you go. And again, I'd just like to reiterate that this is a regional document, so not just U S D four five seven. So you might see pathways that we wrote about in there that are, that we do not currently offer. And that's because another school in our region is offering that pathway. So we did work on the Perkins Five application with Garden City Community College. We were assigned as co-chairs, Chuck Pfeifer and I, to the Perkins Five Local Needs Assessment team. While working on the Perkins Five application, we learned that the Garden City region is significantly below our peers in the Secondary Performance Indicator four S two, which is post-secondary credits attained. So this indicator measures the percentage of CTE concentrators, which I know that's a CTE-specific term. And Tim, you mentioned all of our acronyms. There's a lot of them. So a CTE concentrator is a student who has taken at least two credits in one given CTE pathway. So it can be at any level. We have intro, technical and application. Two credits, they've taken it and passed it. Then they're considered a CTE concentrator. This indicator shows the number of those students who have learned a post-secondary credit at the time of their graduation. So students who have taken the dual-credit course, who are in CTE. And so the state average in twenty eighteen, which is the most recent data, was sixty point two percent. The state goal was fifty-five percent. And this is the negative part of my presentation, so just brace yourself. Our Garden City region is at sixteen percent.
Of what?
Students who have, who are in CTE pathways in high school, who have taken at least two credits of high school CTE classes by the time they graduate in a pathway. Sixteen percent of them have also earned a dual-credit credit. That number should be fifty-five percent. So Chuck Pfeifer, the Dean of Workforce Development at Garden City Community College and I, made increasing this number as quickly possible as possible our main goal in working together in our partnership. This is not a number we can increase quickly. It happens every year. The opportunities have to be there for students. But we have worked together to develop as many dual-credit opportunities as we can for our students and really focusing on CTE courses. So when we decided to do that, we looked at two different types of courses or two different ways to determine which courses we might offer. So we started with looking at the CTE courses at GCHS that have significant enrollment that already had a class that was similar at Garden City Community College. We also looked at CTE courses that qualify for SB one fifty-five funding, which just means it is tuition-free for high school students. So those classes are great opportunities. One common misconception about them is that they are intro level. Some of them are not intro level. They require, they qualify as SB one fifty-five if they require extra training for the teacher or extra certifications at the college level. So it is challenging to find classes that are at our high school students' level that qualify for SB one fifty-five. So looking at significant enrollment at GCHS and classes that have counterparts at the community college, we came up with, at the high school, it's called Twenty First Century Journalism. At the college, it's called Media and a Free Society. And the rule is over eighty percent of the competencies or the standards have to overlap. And so we had a significant overlap there. So this coming school year, we'll be offering Twenty First Century Journalism as a dual-credit. It will be called Media and a Free Society at the community college. These classes, just to clarify, are not free. These classes will be under the college's tuition schedule. Also Accounting One and Accounting Two. So those are three new classes that we were able to develop pretty easily because they already have the class, we already have the class. Let's just mash them up.
None of them are SB one fifty?
None of those are SB one fifty-five. So then here are the classes that we looked at for SB one fifty-five. That is a long list that's hard to find and hard to get. But the college did a great job of trying to find that list for us. So we are offering ag economics, farm management, marketing, interesting, manicuring. It's not, at first I thought it was a misspelling of manufacturing, but it is not. Manicuring, send your nails. Carpentry one and carpentry two. Manicuring and carpentry one and two are a completely kind of new idea for us. Our students will complete first through fourth hours at the, at Garden City High School. And then in the afternoon, they will spend their entire afternoon at Garden City Community College. With both of those programs, when they finish, they will have a cert A, which is, I forget how many hours.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, thank you. Eighteen hours of college credit in one year. So they will be certified to go out into the workforce when they finish that year. Those are some really exciting opportunities. And again, all of those are SB one fifty-five tuition-free. So we are really excited about those opportunities. I have had many students come in and ask me questions about manicuring, so I know we have an interest there. So I'm excited to see what the enrollment numbers are for these new classes. And hopefully, we will get a lot of enrollment and start to raise that post-secondary credit percentage significantly. It is going to take us a while to get that percent up, but we will continue to work on it and look for more ways that we can partner.
So if you, is there a reason that we, that we kind of fell behind in that number, like with that trend?
We think it, it comes to a lack of communication between the two entities. And we've really worked to bring that communication back up. Chuck and I meet often. We call each other often. And we try to find what is the barrier to students coming and try to work through. For example, we've talked about that ag economics and farm management are going to be taught at seven thirty in the morning. So our students are able to go to that class and make it to Garden City High School for a second hour. And so we're looking at more opportunities for early morning classes or just classes that fit our schedule better. But I think there was, and I can't speak to it, Chuck and I both started in their positions at relatively the same time. And we have worked together. But prior to us, I'm not sure that that partnership was quite as strong. I think it is just a little bit of both of us learning our jobs and then learning to work together. But I, that's what I attribute it to. Yeah.
Can I jump in? I've had, started some conversations with Steve about not just the tuition at the community college, but the fees that are added to the tuition. So help me understand, Steve, will you explain this to me? But if the, if the class is held in the high school, the fees that the community college assess are not assessed?
No, I don't believe that's accurate.
That's not accurate?
I don't believe so. And some of these SB one fifty-five, the manicuring and the carpentry will definitely have fees. And we don't have exact totals on that yet, but the college has committed to keeping them as low as possible. For manicuring, there's a few things they need. For carpentry, like a tool belt and a few different small tools, but the college will provide most of the large tools, or all of the large tools.
So what I was running into when my kids are now gone and through this, but the fees that they paid for classes at the community college would many times run roughly forty percent of the tuition fees. And the fees were for computer lab, they were for the, no, the, the sports and entertainment was part of the fees. Do you remember, Steve, we went through these?
Yeah, we said, I don't, I don't remember specifically, but they, I think we've given you a breakdown of what those meant to, and those are things pretty typically at Garden City Community College that probably our students wouldn't utilize.
Correct. And these, and I'm not, I'm not speaking here when you and I went over it because I don't have them in front of me, but the fees would approach fairly close to forty percent of the tuition per community college. And so I have been asking the question, if you multiply that times however many hours each of these classes are, is it possible that the community college fees are becoming a decision-making factor for whether or not people follow up with some of these dual-credit classes? I mean, in our situation, I mean, of course, it's not about my situation, but I did look at the tuition bill for my kids and got set back on my heels pretty hard related to the number of fees and the amount of the fees that the community college was assessing, especially in relation to tuition, for services that the kids would, they would never use.
Yeah, I mean, that is a factor, could be a factor. We have no control over that. But I do know that, that they're, they have told me they are trying to keep the fees for these classes as low as possible. And their carpentry was approved for the college last week. So we are, they are working pretty quickly to get it ready by next year. So they do not have the fees out to me yet, so I don't know how much they are. I can't tell you. I don't know if it includes computer lab or not.
Jenny, so on a, on most of the CTE courses, the tuition and the standard fees, there's no charge to the students, is that right?
There's no.
Some of them, there's specific, like if the program has a lot of supplies specific to that program, then there will be a charge.
Right. Definitely, there will be a charge for manicuring and carpentry. And both of those, they explain, for manicuring is like a health, safety. You can't use the same tools and different, I don't, I'm not a manicurist. I do not know.
But like for marketing, there.
There should not be any fees.
But for the academic-oriented courses, then tuition and fees applies. And the college does provide a pool of scholarship money to help many of our students, but that only goes towards tuition. So for those academic courses, those students are then responsible to come up with a way to pay the fees on their own. Might, there might be another scholarship out there that they qualify for, but there's, there's no normal source of revenue that we have to assist them with that. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes.
So when our students apply for these dual-credit classes with the college, are they eligible for community college scholarships? Just all the general, I mean, I know some of them have requirements, but are they eligible for those scholarships?
Generally, those scholarships are for a full-time college student. But Dr. Prellin was mentioning that the college does have a scholarship specifically for high school students. So if you lost count, we are adding nine dual-credit CTE courses to our enrollment guide this year. Students should be in them next year. And hopefully, by the end of next year, I can report a higher number than sixteen percent to you. And that is my goal.
Did those go out in the enrollment packets?
Yes.
Because when I was looking at the enrollment packet, Twenty First Century Journalism didn't mention dual credits. So did we get those out to the students?
We did, and it.
Did I read it wrong?
Pretty sure it's at the very bottom in bold. It says it's an opportunity for dual credit. If not, I made a mistake because I typed the enrollment guide.
I probably read it wrong.
No, I'm hoping that you did. But that enrollment guide is a, is a tough monster to tame. We are also looking into the opportunity to possibly have an auto mechanics pathway at Garden City Alternate Education Center, using the facilities we already have at J D A. That's a few years out because there's a lot that needs to be done to make that happen. But I'm excited to have a pathway for alternate students. We would also, we've talked about blessing in students from the high school to Garden City Alternate Center if they are interested in auto mechanics. And that would be an entirely dual-credit pathway. Also, we have a new pathway. So the Health Science Pathway, we've had for a long time. And KSCE has teams that get together regularly to look at all of our pathways and classes and competencies and determine whether or not they're accurate or things that are, that they're timely and something that we should be doing. And they removed biotechnology from the Health Science Pathway and instead included it in the Biomedical Pathway. So looking into that, we have biotechnology under Health Science, but we did not have a Biomedical Pathway. And biotechnology would not be funded once it's off of Health Science if we did not add Biomedical. So luckily, we already had all of the intro and tech-level courses that we needed to offer Biomedical. So we, last week, submitted our application to the state to have a new pathway, which is Biomedical. So the intro-level classes are Biology and Chemistry, which I love because our students are already taking those. They already have at least one credit in one level for CTE. So in order to get them to a concentrator, I only need one more credit. And that makes me happy. So then for the tech level, they have Body Systems and Robotics. And at the application level, then they'd be taking the biotechnology course. It's really another change in what we're teaching. We were already teaching all of those courses. It's just a change at what we're going to call it, and we get to say we have one more pathway now. Kind of exciting. And we are continuing partnerships. We've developed a quarterly meeting with representatives from Holcombe, Garden City Community College and U S D four five seven, with superintendents and principals and Dr. Ruda and everybody who has anything to do with anything, we invite them. The list gets longer, I think, at every meeting. And it's really just to get together, look at what opportunities we could provide for our students and how could we get them there. So that manicuring and carpentry, both of those came out of that meeting. The idea, we brought the idea and then we figured out what time would it need to be, but how could we transport students, some of that funding, and all of that was discussed at that meeting. I, like I mentioned, meet with Chuck Pfeifer, the Dean of Workforce Development at the community college regularly. We talk about additional dual-credit opportunities that we could offer for our students and how to make sure that they're prepared to go to college. Something unique is that Chuck and I are actually looking into attending a strand at the Abbott Summer Institute. Something unique is that Chuck and I are actually looking into attending a strand at the Avid Summer Institute together, which would be, I think, unprecedented territory for us to go to a training and professional development together. But Avid now has a strand specifically devoted to how community colleges and high schools can work together. And so, we're both excited about that potential, just seeing to make sure the dates work for him. But other than that, we're planning to go. So, that'll be, I think, a great opportunity for us to really brainstorm and pull some ideas in a structured environment. I'm so excited for that. We work with Finney County Economic Development Corporation a lot. They keep us up to date on incoming and changing business and industry needs that we can better prepare students for the workforce in our region. A recent example is, we've worked with them for quite a while with Empirical coming in and talking about what their labor force needs are going to be, and promoting currently more students to take welding courses, because they're about to need a lot of welders in our area. So, we've been working with them to also develop some specific course sequences within the manufacturing pathway so that we can prepare students for the opportunities at Empirical when the plant does open. Continue to work with Finney County Workforce Connection Youth Development Committee. We evaluate the needs of our students and our local businesses. And I did have a plug for our upcoming event, Virtual Job Application Fair, which is going to be on April twenty-ninth in the library at Garden City High School. This is like a job fair, except we've had waning participation with our businesses. A lot of them say they just don't have the staff to send to us. So, we're going to try having one centralized place for job applications. They can give us their application, and then we're asking for them to come in and volunteer their time to talk to the students and help them with the application. But if they can't make it, they'll still have that opportunity to have their application available to students. And we're going to divide it in the morning. Will be students who are graduating, so eighteen and older, because a lot of our jobs in the community, a lot of times, they tell us, well, I'm not coming to the high school, because I can only hire eighteen-year-olds. And I think it's a misconception that we don't have eighteen-year-olds. We do, and a lot of them are ready to work. So, we're really going to target that in the morning, and then in the afternoon, we will target students who are looking for a part-time summer job, part-time or seasonal. So.
What's the date coming up?
April twenty-ninth. And we're looking at all day. And that is the end of my presentation. Someone else have questions for me?
Start down here this one.
You know, it's real interesting to, to have watched some of the community colleges around the state. It's probably all over, but where they're starting to locate facilities, when they build a new high school, they build a new annex for the community college right there, and sometimes connect it. And I'm wondering, is that in part thinking in terms of this very thing, of trying to make it easier for our high school students to, to get dual credits and, and launch into that future? It, we're, we're fortunate that we've got Garden City Community College right here. But having sat in on a past Holcombe Board meeting, I think at one point, they were struggling in being able to offer for the, because of those individual agreements, apparently, that have to be struck between the Community College and USDs. So, it's kind of neat to hear you guys are collaborating like that.
Yeah, we're working hard with those agreements. We do have to have an agreement with a community college, but now, it doesn't always have to be your most local one. So, some community colleges are working on, they're called statewide articulation agreements, so that it's a little less difficult for USDs to make those connections. And I have encouraged our community college to write as many of those as they possibly can, and they have actually uploaded some. So, hopefully, those are being used across the state for different schools, but-
Are those like online classes, that kind of thing?
Um, an articulation agreement essentially says generally, they're all different, every single one is different, but generally, it says if a student completes this pathway in high school and completes these classes, we will give them this introductory level class. They won't have to pay tuition, we will put it on their transcript as though they've taken it. So, it's an incentive for our students to complete a pathway, especially if they're considering a certain college and a certain major at a certain college. So, yeah.
I'd like, just make a quick comment. I'd like to thank Jenny and Chuck for all their work in this area. They, no doubt, those two communicate more and, and work more on this than, than anybody else from our organization. The board has a goal, I can't remember off the top of my head, it's three, four, three, five, but it's deals with three, five, that deals with partnerships and collaboration. And I, I do want to comment that there has been more of a focus here recently, and President Ruda's leadership of the college has, I think, opened up some opportunities for some of these conversations to be more, more productive, and, and the partnership is really starting to, to, to work well. You're starting to see some of the fruits of that labor in terms of increased offerings, tighter connections with our community and what the needs are in the community. And I think, you know, there's still opportunity, lots of opportunity to improve that, you know, number of our kids that are, have been taken advantage of some of these. We, we need to see that improve. But I just wanted to make sure that the board does recognize these guys have put in a whole lot of work, but there's also conversations that are happening, I think, in other parts of our organizations to make sure that they have the support they need to deliver these opportunities to our kids.
Yeah, just piggybacking on, on that, I'm super excited. One, thank you for advocating for this, for our region and giving a voice to what we know, like makes sense.
That goes to you a lot.
I mean, I really appreciate that. So many times, we get handed down things that just are nonsensical, and it almost feels like not worthy of fighting for that, but it really is, and it makes a difference to our communities, and not just our schools and our students, but, I mean, the, this, the community. So, that is awesome, and I'm really excited about that. Thank you, Jenny, because these projects that you've mentioned sound ginormous, and I can see that, like, that you just work really hard to give our students all sorts of opportunities and, like, increasing that collaboration. And I see, like, proactive when we're, we see what's going to come in, and we can give our students welding jobs or high-paying jobs, good jobs. So, like, if we can be proactive, that's just awesome again for our community. So, I just really, really can't stress enough, like, how excited I am about the increased collaboration and just the opportunities that you guys are going to be giving our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations on this milestone.
Thank you.
And as a board member, you know, I appreciate you showing us that number, and it's not a good number, and, but that's where we're at. And, you know, to be able to present that honestly to the community, because then they understand what supports are needed, or, you know, just, it, it's just an honest reflection of, of ways that we need to improve too. And I, as a board member, really appreciate that. So, never feel nervous that if you have bad news, I mean, nothing's perfect, nothing, we can't be high in all things. And when we see where we need to work, I mean, it gives us perspective, so I just really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move on to the school calendar recommendation for twenty twenty.
Good evening, board. Thank you for allowing me to come and speak about the calendar again. I spoke in the fall a little bit about our process with adopting a calendar as we took steps and, and the board provided a charge to that committee. So, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on reviewing that information. I'll just touch base on a few highlights. So, the first screen that we have just gives you the makeup of our committee. And again, fairly large committee. So, overall, we have twenty-seven participating members, and twenty-one of those people can vote as we're narrowing this process down to select our, our calendars when we take them to a vote. The charge of committee, this is what the board set out for us, which was super helpful. Maintain the current number of contact days for students. Currently, we have a hundred and seventy-four and a half days. Maintain a monthly collaboration component in the calendar. Consider the addition of breaks that may include federal holidays, and have a calendar present by this evening. So, right on time. The goal of the committee is to create the best calendar for students within the provisions of the negotiated agreement. One of our actual norms is that, is we want to keep students first. And so, we review those norms as we go through our meetings each and every time. And then, these are just a few of the things that we have to do by contract. Present two calendars that meet provisions of the negotiated agreement. Some of those are, we have hours set in there of eleven hundred and eighty-three. Total number of in-service workdays, not, no more than ten combined. Parent-teacher conference times, the length of duty day, those are all considerations as we're kind of revamping the calendar or working with the jigsaw puzzle. Uh, this next piece, we get input from as many people as we can. So, parent surveys, we started that a couple of years ago with good results, and then we do a staff survey as well. All staff get to have input in that survey, and so, it goes out to both certified and classified, but only our certified folks get to vote on that when it comes time. And then, we, we created a parent survey as well, which is similar questions, just reduced in terms of the numbers that we, that we ask. So, the results of our parent and staff survey, we had three hundred and fifty-nine participants in our parent survey, which is just a, a little bit up from last year. That three twenty-two mark is where we were at a year ago. But the staff survey was a lot more participation. Two hundred and sixty-seven last year, and we're up to four eighteen this year. So, good participation to have that. The board got all those results through the So You May Know. There was lots of information there. Again, things to consider as we were going through that process. We were able to get our work done in four meetings. And again, I think a lot of that has to do with, with the charge of the board. It's just setting a direction for that committee, again, with lots of brains in the room. And then, of that work, we had nine different drafts during that time that we pieced and parted and liked this and didn't like that and pulled things together. So, those nine drafts got us to two drafts, which we sent out to a vote, and you can see those results in front of you. So, I know it's going to be super hard to see, so that's why I gave you a hard copy. So, the calendar that has draft A on it, and I think it's stamped draft as well, that was the comparable calendar. So, we had two that went out, and that one was unsuccessful. The one that's not marked was the one that we are recommending to the board tonight to go through. So, a, a few differences in the two calendars. So, we work with looking at things like our, our back-to-school in-service time and what we do with new teachers. And so, we have five new teacher in-service days that we work with. And we've tried a lot of different configurations over the years. Way back in the old days, those were all front-loaded, so we had five days at one time. But based on feedback that we get from staff, that's a lot. So, then, we've done things like put a couple of days up front and then split those days in half-day increments perhaps throughout the calendar, so we've had an ongoing professional development model. And then, some combination of that in the middle. And so, this is kind of what we've landed on. Three days up front, and then we split those days, again, kind of throughout the calendar to get to our five. So, that's one piece that's a little different. In September, another difference between the two calendars, we asked for feedback. This year, when the board gave us the charge for the nineteen-twenty calendar, we, we had the, the opportunity to train our staff in Avid for our two-day in-service. And so, that had to be built in to this calendar. So, we, we asked staff, not that we needed Avid training again, but we asked staff if they liked that model. So, the model being that we took those two days of in-service, moved them back a little bit, so it wasn't right at the beginning of the year, gave them an opportunity to kind of get your feet wet, get started, and then have some professional development. And, and we had some, some good feedback that staff liked that. So, then, our next charge was to, okay, what's that going to look like from a PD standpoint? So, we built that in as an option, because again, it was based on that survey data that, that our staff liked that model. So, that's the difference there in September and one of the calendars, that draft A. And then, in November is the other difference, the real difference, is the week of Thanksgiving. And so, again, we have one calendar, the unsuccessful calendar is more traditional. What we typically do, have three days of Thanksgiving. The calendar that is going to be recommended, it has an in-service day built in on Monday, a half-in-service day for veteran staff on Tuesday, and then that other piece, that new teacher training that afternoon. So, our students actually, for the, well, first time in, I think, my history, will have that whole week off for Thanksgiving. So, that's something that's, that's different. And then, January, not significantly changed, but just the length of when we come back from our winter break and how those days were built in, again, with a, a new teacher day being in January along with some in-service time. So, that's kind of the, the calendar. We are not asking for action tonight, and this is a first read for the board. But there is one more piece of information that I promised the committee I would share with the board. The committee would like the district to consider shortening the number of contract days that we have for our staff. I think you saw through our surveys that that came through a lot, and so, they just asked, would the district consider doing that? So, they want that information out to you. Okay?
And that, that, the answer to that, would go back into the middle next year?
Potentially. It, it could be next year through, if we can handle it through negotiations process, but depending on what that looked like, yeah. Other questions for me? Yes, ma'am?
One of the charges was a monthly collaboration time. Looking at this calendar, it looks like there is four months of the school year that does not have a monthly collaboration time for teachers.
Right, so, those, those are, again, just part of our process of working through and creating the, the number of days that are available. That's, I mean, we, we spread that out as much as we could through those different times. So, every one of those in-service pieces will have a collaboration time in it as well. Other questions?
I just want to make sure I'm clear. So, what came, one of the things that came out of the calendar committee was a request from the staff that we shorten the number of contract days.
Four teachers.
Four teachers.
Yeah, yeah. So, that, that's just the, the information that we got back through surveys is, is that's a big request. You saw those through, through that information that was sent to the board after we completed that step. So, they, they would like for the district to consider shorting those days. Is there, is there a way to do that? Still keeping in mind the charge, our student contact days, but is there a way for us to shorten contract days for our staff?
And are some of they seeking less student contact days in that sense, or just?
Well, I don't know that they got into specifics, but they want, they want to consider contract days.
And was there any concerns, because I bring this up every year, about how early we start in August? And another one that I've been asked about is how our district starts on, say, a Monday or Tuesday versus a Wednesday or Thursday, and how that affects the students by the end of the week.
Sure, yeah.
I got through two questions I get once.
Yeah, no, no, it's fine. Yeah, all, all considerations. Those are, you know, a part of those nine drafts are that, is moving back that first part of the new teacher in-service, moving that back later in the week, so that shoves everything back to midweek. Because that is feedback that we got from staff, is don't have a full week of school the first week back. So, we look at that on the first week, we look at that in the return week in January. But it is just kind of a balancing act of what we do, how it all lays out, I guess. But we do, we do consider that when we're looking at full weeks, half weeks, where we put the in-service days to make that happen.
So, with those concerns that were brought up this year?
Sure. Yeah, both through the survey and the work that the committee did in those, like I said, juggling those nine drafts.
And what, this is, on the one you're recommending, that January sixth date where you have the in-service, where, on the other calendar, that's not on there, so where was that day pulled from or changed?
It's a teacher workday on, on the calendar that we're recommending, on the sixth. So, that's part of that negotiation, so they have a double workday in order to, before they meet with students. So, that's, that's that, and then that workday is on the fifth, on the draft A calendar. Is that your question?
Well, I'm, I guess I was looking for the day where kids are in school where that was taught. Does that make sense, so?
Where we came up with the in-service day, on what would be the fifth of January.
Well, on draft A, they go to school on the sixth, then on this one, they don't.
Yeah, so the in-service day is really the changer there. On the draft B, I will call it, so on draft B, on the fifth, that's an in-service day, which we don't have in draft A. So the in-service day on draft A was used to build those back-to-back in-service days in September. So again, it's just moving pieces around.
Apologize for putting you on the spot. Do you know offhand the number of contract days that some of the surrounding school districts have in relation to what we have?
I don't locally. I provided at one time, and I don't think I have it, Dr. Hannigan, here, but kind of our average mean, the number of days that we have student contact days versus other five thousand-plus districts, and we're right in line. So if you looked at our size, we're right in line with the average in the state. But I don't have it based on Holcomb, Deerfield, Ingalls. I know that, I think we're a lot different than Ingalls. I think they have a very short calendar. But I don't have the comparisons. So state average is one hundred and sixty-nine point nine. This would have been last year's data. And then districts over five thousand are at one seventy-three point six. And we're at one seventy-four and a half.
Student contact.
Yes, or student contact days.
And is there required amount by law?
It's one thousand one hundred and sixteen hours. Is what the statute is. Other questions?
Does the state, the state has only a mandate for the number of student contact hours. There is no mandate for the number of professional development or contract days that are not student contact days?
No, I don't believe. If I'm understanding your question.
The number of, I'm trying to sort out, because you gave it to me in hours, how many student contact days we have versus how many teacher contract days?
Okay, one seventy-four and a half of student contact. And then we have a hundred and eighty-five, eighty-four, a hundred and eighty-four contract days.
So we have about eleven days?
Ten, ten extra days with our teacher contraventions.
It's been a while since I've looked at this, So You May Know, with all of that information from the survey. Did they have a recommendation for how many contract days they would like to see?
No, they just, it's come up for several years. And so, talking about when is the, where does that question fit essentially? And so I just, I told the committee, I said, I would make sure that I shared that with the board in terms of those feelings that they wanted to look at. Because it is, it does come through survey information over and over.
If I recall correctly, and maybe putting you on the spot too, because this was even before I was on the board, it's maybe Dr. Carlin right now. And I think it was Kathleen who was in KJ's spot. But we gave, the district negotiated for the extra days to do the professional development and gave a higher raise one year through the negotiated agreement to compensate for those extra days, if I recall correctly. Is that right?
That's my understanding. I was probably still in high school, or, no, I'm just kidding.
Basically, we were at Garfield.
That's right, I was at the Children's Childcare Center, so, yeah. I'll let Dr. Kirkland speak to that, because it was before I was in this position, so.
So at one point, we added three days, I believe, to, I can't remember if it was two student contact days and one PD day, or one PD, or one, or the opposite of that. So, and we, I think we paid, daily pay to add those, excuse me, to add those three days. So I think one of the things that's, and I appreciate the committee's work on this, and they're trying to be respectful of the feedback they get. But I think really, this is probably an issue better addressed through negotiations than through the calendar process, because it is a contractual issue with the teachers. And so we're getting ready for negotiations this year to start that process. And that would certainly be something that fits right in with how that process, the topic, kind of topics that that process would normally discuss. Because there are a lot of issues around that. And the calendar committee is, you know, it's a pretty structured. As you can see, while there's a lot of choices, there's a lot of requirements to fit within the requirements of the negotiated agreement. You know, I was looking at one calendar, and Jen, for your question, you know, we're done a whole week before Memorial Day. So why can't you just move everything back and start a week later? Well, I'm going to guess, I didn't go to those meetings, but I'm going to guess they talked about that.
Yeah.
We did. And so.
It throws off the length of the semester's times, between the first semester and the second semester.
I was excited to ask that one this year.
Yeah, there's, there's drop dead times that the staff want to have done, so it's part of the discussion.
Well, I appreciate that you bring up the negotiations as part of it. I've had teachers visit with me, and sometimes they feel stuck because the calendar's typically decided a little bit before. Or it feels like, they feel like they're in a circle, because they hear, well, that's negotiations, you should decide that. But calendar's decided, so then we can't discuss it in negotiations. So teachers feel like they're not sure where to ask that question.
And that's why we got here this evening, is because I promised the calendar committee we would do that. We would bring it to the district, the board, to make sure that was known, so you can figure out the chicken and the egg process.
Well, I think when we added those days, we actually couldn't do it through very much year, because we already set a calendar. So I think it had to go into effect the following year. I'm guessing if through negotiations, we shortened the calendar, I don't think anybody's going to object if we cancel a day that's scheduled on the calendar and could probably more easily do a revised calendar. Or worst case is, it may take a year to step into it, but it certainly, you know, that, those kind of things could certainly. The other thing I would point out about that time, you know, we, in our district, when the state started cutting budgets, we didn't have to cut as much as other districts did, because we had room to raise our local option budget. So the philosophy was, if the state made a cut of two million dollars, we cut about a million, and we raised our local option about a million. We kind of went along that way as long as our local option budget allowed us to do that. There were a lot of districts that couldn't do that. They'd already maxed out their LOBs. So the only choice they had was to cut it. And so many of those districts chose to reduce their contract, and in some cases, their student contact days, because they had to make cuts and they couldn't give raises. And so they chose to do that, maybe give back a day as an alternative. Or some of the districts that had went to four-day weeks chose to do that as a cost savings measure, not necessarily because it was the best choice for students. And so fortunately, we had other options and alternatives and didn't necessarily have to go that route. So there's quite a bit of background on all that. But we are where we are, and we can get some more updated information for you about that. But kind of bring us back, the process has, we followed the process with the calendar, and it's went out to vote. And we're not asking for a decision tonight, but do you want to?
Yeah, so barring any questions for the discussions, it would be on the consent agenda for our next meeting of this one.
And which would be the payables meeting?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
So Laura brought up that it didn't need all the board's input. Is, would that discussion be held?
Now, and if you don't want to, if you have concerns about approving this, and you want the calendar committee to go back to work, you can make that decision tonight so that they could get right back on it. Or if you want to have more discussion. But I will tell you that the further this gets pushed out, it starts to set other things back. If we get much past the first part of April, and we don't have a calendar set for the coming year.
So Laura, do I have any discussion on that, as I, or you?
No, I wanted to point it out that it didn't meet that particular criteria. But I believe in the committee process, and if this is what the committee's recommending and passed by the teachers, I'm not going to stand in the way of it. But I do want to point out that it did not meet that criteria.
Any other concerns?
I'm curious about what maybe I missed, is what percentage of the staff voted on this?
Do you have that number?
Like I said, I probably missed it.
Yeah, this is from the, this is from the survey, not the vote. I want to say it was like sixty percent is total number of votes. It'll take me a minute, I'll send it to you, what the results were, because I have it in my email. But that's going to take a second.
Got it.
Do you have it? Please.
It looks like there were three hundred and fifty-seven voters. And draft B had two hundred and fifteen, draft A at a hundred and forty-two.
So what was the total number of voters?
Three hundred and fifty-seven.
So what percent, do we, can we do a percent of what?
Yeah, but that math is hard, so.
Yeah, you can use the calculator.
That's why I asked you the question.
So of the people that voted, sixty percent voted for draft B. Was that the question you were asking?
What percentage of teachers did we not respond to?
Total, no?
But just what percentage of our teachers are?
About sixty.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, with that, do you have any more board discussion or concerns? Or do we feel comfortable proceeding and voting at the next meeting? I think it is, Jennifer, are you?
Yeah, I'll just email any questions I have.
Okay, and we will proceed to the next meeting to take a vote, thank you.
Any questions that I get, I'll make sure that Dr. Collins sends them out.
Okay, so we'll move on to the vacant board seat discussion. Dr. Carlin did share with us pass methods. One of the things that we got in an email was that KASB has shared that after fifteen days of pass, since the publication of the vacancy, the board may fill the vacancy as they see fit. It was published on the board. KASB indicated common methods for filling vacancies. Our prior election, next highest vote, board interviews, interested candidates. The interviews must be conducted in open session. And the final being providing written questionnaires to interested candidates. And the responses are then public information. I don't know if anybody had a chance or wants to open with some discussion, thoughts?
I haven't. I'll just throw it out there as a thought. Historically, when we've had a position open, and I believe the last one, if I can remember right, we ended up filling the position with Laura, who was, at the last election, the highest vote getter, highest next vote getter. And I think it's important to think in terms of relative votes to a certain extent, because you wouldn't want too much of a difference there in that consideration. But as I recall, it was pretty close with the next person who campaigned and ran all the ballot. And so I think there's certainly an obvious option there to consider, based on what we've done in the past, and as an expression of the voting community of four, five, seven. So I just put that out there as an option. I kind of like that personally over other options, just because of that expression of the public will. And I don't mean to take away from other folks that are interested and expressed an interest, because certainly that's why we put that out there as a board, to solicit that. But I'm just saying that personally, I kind of favor that approach just from the standpoint of that community engagement in the question and our need to fill the positions so that we can proceed with that collaboration we cherish on the board between seven individuals.
Okay, any other comments?
For me personally, I am not in favor of that method. I feel like, and not because I can't articulate anything yet this night, I feel like it's a lazy way to proceed. If KASB indicates that we give fifteen days to allow people to show interest, to me, that would be contradictory to allowing those people an opportunity without any question or chance. And why give, why let people show interest if then we just don't give them an opportunity? I think that the whole election process is really intimidating and overwhelming. And I think when this opportunity comes up, it also offers an opportunity for people, maybe a different part of the population, to step up. Not to say that this isn't going to be just as intimidating if we do public interviews, but I think when you tell people to show interest and then you don't respond to that, it's, I don't think that that's a good precedent to set.
Could I respond to? I certainly don't mean to suggest any disrespect for people that have expressed their interest, but I also feel like there's a need to, first of all, if the next vote getter didn't express any interest, well, I don't think you want to go there. And so in part, I think we received that as one of the, I think, four, or were there more? Four people that stepped up and put their hat on the table, whatever the metaphor is. But to, and I certainly appreciate your comments. I'm thinking though that it's quite the process that you're considering. Because what we have to basically go through a process of interviewing and, I mean, regardless of what we do, there's a judgment. And so we either go through a process of interviewing and collaborating to determine the best responses to questions, or whatever the process is that we devise, it's still a judgment of us. And certainly, we have been voted into this position by the voters of the district. So we can do that. I'm just saying that my thought and approach, putting that on the table, is just simply relying on that process that's already there from the voters. And the only time that I would not go with that is if that next vote getter did not express interest.
I tend to agree with Mark. I have a tremendous amount of respect for the other people that have put their name into the hat to do this. And I know that anybody that's put their name on would be more than capable of filling that position and doing the fabulous job. My feeling is that if we have people that have voted, and we have a person that was on the ballot, then to me, it's honoring the voters that have already voted in the community, instead of us just making the decision and voting on our own for that piece, if that makes sense. Like I said, I have a tremendous amount of respect for the other people who've put their name in, um, but I feel like we need to honor the community and the votes that they've already put forward to be able to do that.
If I can clarify on something, it wasn't KASB's suggestion that we wait fifteen days to see who is interested. We are statutorily required to publish the notice of the vacancy and allow for fifteen days to pass with regard to that. So that's not, I mean, it's a statutory requirement that we have to comply with, which we have done. Considering the last two vacancies that have come up and that this, this, the USD four five seven Board of Education, obviously not necessarily this board, have honored the will of the electors or the voters. Um, and obviously, that's how I got on initially. I think that's something that we need to hear, to honor, especially considering how recent the election was.
Okay, anybody else? Jennifer? Tim?
Well, one of the troubling things for me is that, um, I think we were forwarded an email from, um, one of the people that would like to be considered, that laid out the argument for why they should be considered. And I don't actually personally know any of the other, um, people that would like to have this position. When I got the email, I felt uncomfortable with the fact that I now had information about one candidate, when in fact, I have no information about the other candidates. And I wondered about the fairness of that. I'm a little torn about that. And then I think I, I definitely would echo, um, a couple of points that Dana has made, and that is, um, we look for high quality people to participate in all aspects of committees, site councils, this board, and, um, I wonder, as Dana does, if we aren't placing sometimes barriers to participation from people who might offer a diversity of opinions and outlooks. And I, I see this as a unique opportunity for us to at least consider whether or not we are able to better diversify this board. I'm not sure that Mark and I are, um, highly diverse between the two of us.
Some would say yes, and some would say no.
He's got better hair. I don't know if that's it, but, um, and I, I do think that, uh, at least my personal feeling on my election was that it was name recognition. And that's troubling to me. I saw some candidates in their last election, got to know one of the candidates, got to know their background, and they had an incredibly diverse and rich experience that I thought would really bring a lot of different ideas to the board. And unfortunately, um, running for office and putting yourself out there as someone who could publicly lose a contest, I know was stressful for me. I did have to put up some of my own money, put up some of my own signs, and I just wonder about those barriers and I do appreciate the idea that this selection of a, of the next highest vote getter, um, is respectful to the public, that we, we are forced on this board always to make decisions that we may know is good for the school, good for the kids, good for the board, good for the teachers, but may not be, if you were to take a vote, may not be the most publicly popular thing to do. And that's what comes along with good boardsmanship, which is to stand in the face of public opposition if you really believe that you have the best interest of the kids in the school district at heart. Is it extra work it is? But I guess I just hope that, uh, we'll think about the future and the development of leadership in this community, and we'll work at ways to try to diversify this board and encourage participation from people who wouldn't normally have the opportunity to participate because they don't have a name recognition, and they would someday become the future leaders to encourage the next generation.
You gonna have a comment?
I, I guess I, I like some of the points that Dr. Hannigan made, but I also feel like trusting the process. The election, participating in an election and the political side of that is my least favorite part, but it was important enough to me, to go through that, to, to be here to do what's best for kids, because that's the only reason I'm on board. And so I guess I believe in trusting the process and, and that, and trusting the word of the voters and who they went with. So that's the direction I would lean.
Okay. I think it's important for us to make a decision, um, fairly quickly, considering especially what happened at the last board meeting. Um, that way, we have a full board. So I, at least to get the conversation started a little, or going in into a moving forward direction, um, I'm going to move that we appoint Alex Wallace, who is the next highest vote getter, um, to fill Jean Clifford's position.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Also.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same time? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Alex, you will be, fill the next board spot.
Thank you.
I guess that will be at the next meeting.
First of all, Madam, Madam President, I guess I was waiting for just, more discussion on that, but, and he didn't call for any of that. And so that moved before I was able to say that I was in favor of the motion. I didn't ever say aye, yea, or nay, I just want to reflect I was in favor of the motion.
Well, if I could, because I know several of them, I, I don't know if all four of them are here, but thank you so much for your interest and your time and coming today. Um, it's greatly appreciated, and I hope that you take the opportunities to serve on all of our committees. Maybe we can call on you guys.
All right. So you didn't respond? Do we?
I, I would assume you could start immediately.
I think you can just be sworn in.
Oh, that's probably true, has to sign his oath at the clerk's office, so. Uh, can I back up to, all four of the people who volunteered are here tonight, and I would like to thank you. I, I visited with each of you briefly, um, but, um, we're always looking for good people to be involved in things. I know some of you have been involved with things, but if you have an interest in, we have, like Dr. Hannigan mentioned, we have a lot of groups that meet, and I would be happy to help you, um, get connected with some of those groups, and I would hope that, um, if you continue to have an interest that may be at a future, when, when we, when we have an election, that you would consider, um, running for a, a position. Um, we, we do a lot of important work here with this board, and, um, so we need great people. The comforting part to me in this whole process was we had four good candidates, um, to fill that, that spot, but obviously, there can only be one. So if I can help you in the future, uh, if you would like to, um, follow up, please give me a shout, and I would be happy to help you any way I can. And then, uh, we'll get with the, the county clerk and follow up on Mr. Wallace's appointment.
Okay.
And I just, just to put out there too, is it, my vote was not a vote against Alex, it's a vote against the precedent that was set, because I don't think that, that is the best, um, I don't agree with that, that part of the process, so just FYI, Alex, I'm, I'm excited to have you on the board, so. Any other comments, or?
I do, do want to say that, that I just really appreciate it in the interest of, I mean, such a commitment to even throw your hat in. It's just a great thing, and, and so everybody that did that is to be commended.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, then let's move on to board open discussion. Janine, you're up, start.
I don't have anything ready. I'm not at work. I heard that. Because I could mention the Chamber of Bankruptcy on the sixth. Since Laura's given me evil eye.
On the fifth?
Fifth. Um, KASB is having a comp training in Scott City on Thursday. Um, you should be done in time, go to the Chamber of Bankruptcy if you want to go. It's on school finance. Um, it looks like it'd be a really good one for us to, if you're able to go, um, especially since it's in Scott City. So, um, and I think that's all I have.
Tim?
I made a little bit of a reference this evening to the, uh, fees that the high school students pay to the community college, um, just so I could catch all of you up. Um, I've been meeting with Dr. Carlin and doing some research on what those fees are. It caught my attention, the last few times I paid the tuition for my kids for their dual credit classes at the community college, and I can't say that it necessarily affected any of my decisions about my kids going to the community college, but it did strike me that these fees are not insignificant, and I will be just poking around a little bit, asking questions, and just wanting the rest of the board to know that this is on my radar a little bit, and I'm just trying to educate myself about those fees.
Okay. Mark?
Okay. Not too much, but in talking about kindergarten readiness and all that we do in the district to, um, to train our staff and to look for engaged employees, you know, encourage every employee to be engaged. I think we had a little bit of, we had comments, and I can't remember whether it was the commissioner at KASB or at the annual conference, or whether it was the poller, uh, from the organization that did the polls. But basically, it highlighted in some of the comments how important it is to encourage staff to remain engaged. I think the simple example that was given, excuse me, was you walked down the hall and there's a piece of paper there laying on the floor, I mean, it's a piece of trash, and, you, you might have somebody that sees that, walks over, picks it up, and puts it where it belongs. That's an engaged employee versus, say, somebody that walks by and said, well, it's not my piece of paper, it's not my job, shh, off they go. And then a very, very rare occasion, men see it and say, oh, that's where the paper belongs, and they dump the paper in the hallway. You know, but it's, it's that first employee that we love and cherish so much, and it really makes the world go around for USD four five seven to have engaged employees. They, they have each other's back, the collaborative environments and the processes that we follow, that's something I learned very early on as a board member, is process is important, and a truly collaborative environment makes things, makes for good decisions that are good for kids and good for classrooms. And so it's always good to see that. And, uh, and, and I got a t-shirt on here, TKI is a okay. That's just one program and one example, uh, in early childhood where that happens. And it can't happen without good collaboration amongst a lot of different people, classrooms, you know, therapists, parents. And so it'd be interesting to hear about TKI sometime, because I think I know just enough to be dangerous. But it's one of those things, I think, one of those tools that we have in USD four five seven, we've had for many, many years, to try to deal with all of these young minds coming in in early childhood and getting them ready for kindergarten. And, um, and for those kindergarten classrooms to be able to address, you know, a reasonable group of kids that aren't too diverse, or, or don't include kids that maybe need self-contained, or some other middle, which is what TK is, TKI is, some other middle ground. So it's just an example, I think, of, of process and engaged employees that really help us make it happen with early childhood and transitioning into kindergarten. So I made this t-shirt. You know, more specifically, at Florence Wilson, uh, they had, not Kat and had, Dr. Seuss Newspaper Day, so it was headlines, so white shirts and, and black newsprint, so. I had the shirt made up for that reason. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Dr. Carlin?
I will be going to Washington DC tomorrow with, um, some people from the Kansas Children's Service League. We were selected last spring to a partnership program with the Office of Head Start, um, and one of the things that kind of wasn't mentioned tonight in terms of kindergarten readiness was a partnership with, um, Kansas Children's Service League and our local Head Start folks. Another example of an agency in this community that's working collaboratively with us to, to help address that readiness issue, and not only for, one of the things I've learned from this process is they're not so much about kindergarten readiness for kids as they are really about helping families, um, address that as well as many other needs in, in their lives. And so, uh, the whole purpose of the program was to increase collaboration and communication between Head Start programs and local school districts. So when our folks wrote the application last year, we were one of twelve districts selected, so that was pretty cool. Um, and I will, I'm happy to report back that we have improved our communication. Mary Martha Good was hired as director about, about the time all this was, was getting going, and, uh, the people there have been great, and our folks on our end have been great, and we're starting to really see where that communication is actually making a difference in some of the services for kids. We still recognize we've got a big gap of meaning to serve more and more kids and more and more families, so we've got a lot of work ahead of us, but, um, we actually have the attention of the National Director of Head Start, um, and we're going to her turf Wednesday and Thursday to, to hear what others are doing and, and look for more ways, report out about what we're doing and, and look for more ways that we can, um, make things even better. And then, um, uh, lastly, uh, just want to tell you thank you, the board sent a plant of the passing of Mary's mom, and that's been a difficult thing for her in her life, and we certainly appreciate, um, your thoughtfulness and your support during that time, so thanks.
And I just want to mention, it was one of twelve districts in the nation, not just the state, so I didn't have to bring them up to you. Okay. So, um, the next board meeting will take place on Thursday, March twenty-six, twenty twenty, at five PM in the board meeting room at the Educational Support Center. And we will move on to executive session.
I may just, as an FYI, either, I might not be here, so, KH soccer, we'll see. We're so questionable. Sorry, how long do we, do you think we need?
Thirty?
I'd start with thirty.
How long do you think we need?
Let's start with. I'll go quick.
Okay. They have the last words. Before I make my motion, um, considering that, but for the fact that the county clerk is closed at eight and PM, um, and considering what we're going to be discussing, I would like to invite Alex Wallace to our executive session.
and considering what we're gonna be discussing, I would like to invite Alex Wallace to our executive session. Would that be all right?
She's not been sworn in, we can do that.
Yeah. I talked to KASB about it from a prior executive session that we were doing, and it's up to us. We can invite whoever we want. So it's not illegal to do that.
Madam President, I move we go into executive session for thirty minutes to start, to discuss negotiations for the twenty-twenty-one school year under the exception for employer-employee negotiations under comma beginning at eight fifteen. Um, and the open meeting will resume in the board meeting room at eight forty-five PM. I would like to invite Dr. Carlin, Heath Hogan, KJ Knoll, and Alex Wallace.
Okay? Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. All right.